Okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of Common Council of July 1st, 2025. We're just a few minutes late at 5:51, so I'm calling the meeting to order. This is a charter revision workshop, and so I've called the meeting to order. Let us take a moment if you'll please rise and join me with for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
United States of America. And to the republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
Nation.
For God.
Under the principle. Liberty and justice.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein. Mr. Lopez. Ms. Najelski-Eichner. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers. Mr. Seb.
President.
Mr. Wiggins. Ms. Young. Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Winterstrand.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton. Mr. Frere.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan. Four, five, six, seven. We have seven in attendance and we don't need it for.
We have seven. Yeah, because we're discussing and there will be no votes tonight. Is there anyone moving on to public participation? Is there anyone who is on would like to speak during public participation? Please raise your hand. All right, I don't see anyone, so we'll go ahead and close public participation. And then we are going to move on to to the review of the proposed charter revision. And Attorney Mednick, thank you for joining us. I believe you wanted to make a statement before we get started.
Yeah, just a brief statement. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. It's good to see everybody tonight. We talked briefly in the pre-meeting about the remainder of the schedule. I just want to remind everybody that we are still in the phase where the council is now considering recommendations for a return of the document to the commission. There have been a number of discussions we've had. You'll continue tonight and you'll continue for at least one more session through the 22nd of the month. And at that time, you'll have a public hearing next week. The reason for the public hearing, let me let me explain, is you need to act within 15 days of your last public hearing. And the public hearing has to be within 45 days after the receipt of the document. The 45th day is the 14th of of Bastille Day, actually, the 14th of July. And so your public hearing will take place on the 8th. And the final action will be on the 14th day, so one day to spare to act on your recommendations. And so, once the recommendations are acted upon, they'll go back to the council. We'll have to set up a conferral meeting. And so if we're locked in for the 22nd, I'll talk to the Chair of the Charter Commission, perhaps he and the President can get together and decide on what night to they'll have their conferral meeting. The council, the commission has technically 30 days at that point. My recommendation is that during that period of time that we have some representation of council members' leadership at the meeting so that we can have a dialogue during that period of time to make sure that when this document comes back, you'll end up with a document that you can approve, because at that point, you're only going to be able to vote up or down. You will not be able to amend anything that comes back to you. So it's really important that as they consider your recommendations, that they have really good feedback and an exchange of ideas so that they can come up with recommendations that will be agreeable to hopefully to a majority of the body. So I just wanted to just let you know where we were and and what the process is at this point. And I do see a couple of the commissioners are here. And I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any questions during the course of the evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Mednick. Yeah, and so, you know, just to be clear for the public, what we are doing is adding a public hearing on July 8th at 7 o'clock. That will be before our next common council meeting. And then we are tentative, we will, you know, schedule. And we're either going to schedule a meeting, and this is this is a part that's a little bit up in the air, is when we will actually have our deliberations and vote. We are trying to look for a date in the second full week of July. But there is possibility that that meeting will need to happen, that vote and deliberation will need to happen during the common council meeting on the 22nd. So that's the part that's just, you know, we're not 100% certain on. We're still looking for a date, you know, to that that will work for everyone. So and then after that, we will confer back to the Charter Revision Commission and take it from there. So so what we're going to do tonight is pick up where we left off and and what I'll do is, as I have been doing, is reading through the sections. And then if someone has, you know, some additional comments or would like to make, you know, a recommendation or or, you know, discuss possible amendments, then you'll stop me and and we will do that. So so where we left off in the last meeting was we were discussion discussing 4-7 C, which regarded the language around compensation. So we're going to move past that for now and just get through the rest of it so we can, you know, assure that, you know, we're we're moving along and then come back and and discuss, you know, some some possible amendments. So moving on to Article 4-10. In this section, the commission recommends one, reducing the percentage of electors required to sign a referendum petition from 8% to 4%. That's Section 4-10 AD and F2 and 3 and 2, reducing the number of electors filling a referendum petition from 5 to 4, 4-10B. Any comments, proposed changes? Okay. Article 5, there are no changes recommended. Article 6, the commission has recommended the repeal of the Office of Sheriff as set forth in Section 6-4. Comments? Right? Moving on to Article 7, the commission has recommended the following revisions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, just going back to the sheriff. The rationale behind eliminating that is is what? Is it because they feel that the role that is no longer being utilized or?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn that over to Attorney Mednick.
Yeah, I'd be happy. I see Doug, the vice chair is there and he might want to speak, but my my recollection is that they felt that this was a position that really didn't serve any purpose going forward. I know the commission considered it two years ago. They considered eliminating the constables, but it was determined that the constables still do play a a role. If the sheriff, I don't know if the sheriff is up for reelection this year, but if the sheriff is up for reelection, the sheriff obviously will be elected to a full term in office the same night that he or she's the office is eliminated, if eliminated by the voters. So if the sheriff is on the ballot this year, the sheriff will serve a complete term. And that'll be the last term a sheriff would serve because the position will be abolished. But I believe it was because the commission felt that there was no function for the office in the modern world.
Right.
I think, right, the vice chair, the vice chair validated that position. Okay.
Yes.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, so back to Article 7, the commission has recommended the following revisions. 7-1B2, the commission modified the subsection addressing the administrative requirements of boards and commissions to require compliance with these three provisions in lieu of adopting the provisions in an ordinance establishing a board or commission.
Can I explain the reason for that?
Sure.
The reason for that? When we created, I don't know if you remember this, when we create, and this is very embarrassing, when we created the 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 reapportionment commission, we've we neglected to put these provisions in the ordinance. And the charter requires that you put them in the ordinance. And from that experience, we felt that why don't we simply have the provisions in the charter that guide every board and commission? So you don't have to put it in an ordinance or forget to put it in an ordinance. And that was the the rationale for it.
Thank you. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to 7-1B2C, the commission repealed the requirement to comply with minority party representation as it was already addressed in 7-1B7.
It was a redundancy.
It was.
It's not eliminating, yeah, it's not eliminating the requirement, but it was repeated and didn't need to be repeated.
Okay. 7-1B2D, the commission clarified the requirement for boards and commissions to establish a standard for frequency of meetings unless otherwise addressed by ordinance. Well, good. 7-1B4, the commission eliminates the language that a board or commission must not cancel meetings for two consecutive months and certain entities may not hold, need to hold monthly meetings. Pretty straightforward.
Hmm.
Okay. 7-1E2, the removal standard permits the board or commission to establish a standard for attendance by its members for purposes of removal from office. 7-2A2, the commission recommend recommend that the term of office for the Board of Estimate Taxation commence on the first day of February on a staggered basis for a term of four years. Okay, I know we did have a fair amount of discussion about that when this was presented to us, so I think we're okay. 72-83, the commission recommends a provision that requires the Board of Estimate Taxation to include at least one member from each of the five council districts. Current language restricts membership to not more than two members from any one council district belonging to the same political party. Questions or comments?
I don't know what my question is. Just explain to me the rationale behind that.
Sure, Attorney Mednick.
Yeah, I think that the one they wanted to make sure that there was broad distribution and that each district, council district throughout the town, the city had representative on the Board of Estimate. The way it's set up right now is that it is possible that one district, well, it's not possible, it's it is probable that one district will have at least two representatives, but I think it was the idea was to make sure there was geographic representation of each of the areas of the city.
See, my concern here is that I get that. But we're looking for particular people with financial expertise that may not be available in every one of the districts. So we would be limiting or diluting the the power, not that I shouldn't say the power, but the intellectual capacity that we want to be inject in this into injecting this in group. So we should not, I don't think we should be limited by any particular where where they, what district in which they they reside.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner. Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna really push back on that. I think it's entirely. I have no doubt that we can find someone with qualifications necessary in each district. And I also think that it is very important that all five districts have a say in this commission, which, as we have talked about at great length, is really in many ways the most powerful body in this city. So I think it's actually, I thought it was an excellent recommendation. And I believe it came from Mr. Camacho, who served on the BET and I think has expressed concerns about it not having enough representation of the full city, if I recall correctly from the meetings. So I think I actually feel very strongly that this was a is a good addition.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna add my support for it, too. I think it's it's important that that the entire city is represented. Attorney Manic, did you want to add anything? I see I see Mr. Hempstead would like to contribute. Go ahead, Doug.
I'm agreeing, obviously agree with what they put forward here, because this is no different like planning and zoning, where you want to make sure your districts are representative. Spread the voices around and according to the city charter, there is no record, there is no qualifications required for any of these positions, except you have to be of citizens of Noah. So I think it, we did it years ago, with P and Z used to be not that way. And we did it decades ago, we changed it around. So each district got represented. So I think it's a reasonable request. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, Doug.
I actually disagree with that since I think you know, the the purpose of of having a BET is to have financially astute advice that's good that people are going to be able to give us. And if we can't get that high level of expertise, one from each one of our districts, then, you know, the the representative, that one person that we're that we're representing there is going to be is going to be, you know, the weak link, and then we're gonna not get the 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 benefit that we should be getting out of the BET. I think it's a, you know, if if anything, I think that people have been on there because they have had a a good, you know, strong financial background. And just because they come from a different district doesn't mean that they're going to be, you know, it's it's not that they're they're championing, championing, championing any particular item that they're looking at. They're looking at it from a financial governance responsibility. If you start requiring that each district have their own representative, that now you now now, you know, what what party are they going to be in too? Do we going to have a restriction on what party they're going to be in? I think it should be just based on their 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 financial qualifications and how they can help the city with our our delicate financial balance that we have to maintain in order to to make the city run.
Attorney Medic, did you want to contribute anything on this?
The only thing I was gonna say is there already are restrictions on party. There there has to be minority party representation, and there's a balance limitation on how many people from one political party can be there. And I think the theory, and again, I'll defer to 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 Doug on this. I think the theory was that they do do the line item budget and line item budget requires kind of a breadth and understanding of each and every community in in the in the city, in addition to whatever expertise they bring to the table. And so I don't think anybody viewed it as a replacement for elected officials who are going to be directly responsive to their constituents. But I think it was a way for the commission to at least try to replicate some sense of representation for each of the districts and an understanding of each of the districts as they approve the line items of the budget, because they ultimately have line item control. And again, I'll defer to Doug or or John if they have any anything else to say on that.
You know, so again, we're we are not voting on anything tonight. So, you know, we're just looking for discussion. We have a couple of different perspectives. Would anyone else like to contribute to the conversation at this time? Okay, so you know what I'll do is, you know, we're going to highlight this section as one that, you know, there are some continued questions and we can move on. Mr. Levin, I see that you your hand raised. If you could just, you know, go ahead and and make a quick comment.
Sure, I just want to mention that the when the Charter Revision Commission first convened and the members, some members of the council came to discuss what their concerns were and how the charter might be approved. There had been some suggestion that the the BET as a non-elected body it does not serve the city well enough as an elected body would be. Obviously, the recommendations made by the CRC speak for themselves, and the only recommendation relating to the BET is to require that there be at least one representative from each of the five districts. However, there had been some discussion. It was voted down, and that is that a portion of the appointment authority for BET members currently, all eight appointed members are appointed by the mayor and approved by the council, and there had been some a discussion about whether it might be appropriate to divide that so that half are appointed by the mayor and half were appointed by the council. That did not, that did not meet a concurrence among the commission members. But of course, it's something that the council itself, given that some of your members had expressed these concerns, might wish to look at.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Levin. All right, so let's move on and, you know, we'll continue the discussion on that another time. 7-2B1A and 7-2C1A, the commission recommends that members of the Police and Fire Commissions serve co-terminously with the mayor, subject to approval by the common council. Any comments or questions on that discussion? Okay.
And just very quickly, Madam President, I just wanted to confirm, I believe we discussed this at one of the earlier workshops, but I I believe that this actually replicates what currently happens, correct? This is just then changing it to be with four years as opposed to the two years. Yes?
Yeah, it's a reverse engineering, basically.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, it just reflects what's going on right now.
Okay, Article 8, the commission recommends following technical changes. 8-2A2, the commission recommends elimination of the word unclassified prior to employee, since it is not a term used by the city. Moving on to 8-2A4, the commission recommends that the appointment of the library director by the mayor, subject to approval by the council, be made following consultation with the Public Library Board. We discussed that recently as well. And I think we're pretty clear on that. Any comments or questions? Okay. 8-3B, the commission recommends repeal of the role of the Board of Estimate Taxation with regard to the structure of the Office of the Corporation Council. Comments, questions, or Attorney Mednick, if you just want to give us a quick insight on that one to clarify?
It's just checking the calendar and something coming which section again, Madam President?
It's 8-3B. Repeal of the Board of Estimate. Yeah. To the Corp Council.
Yeah, because apparently that's not done. So that's the reason that that vision was taken out.
Okay, just to clarify. 8-4B4, 8-4 C2 and 3, 8-4D, 8-4E1 and 2, and 8-7B2 and 3, the commission recommends recodifying of sections 14-2, 14-3, 14-4, 14-5N and O and 14-6 AM. Regarding Special Act Authority, we recommend that the council addresses the delineation of provisions in 8-7B2 and 3 for further refinement. And that was regarding the Home Rule Act, if I'm recalling.
Yeah, if if I may, what I want to try to do before your final meeting, and I apologize for not having done it sooner, I'm going to call Tom Livingston and see if we can meet with the appropriate department heads and see if we can come in with a proposal, either to have it locked in when you send it over to the commission or to ask the commission to do it. In a couple of cases, these are the sections that came out of the back of the charter. You'll note that we're not going to have those chapters at the end of the charter are gone. In a couple of cases, the departments took the easy way out and put everything into their section. I want to take one last shot to see if we can eliminate many of these provisions. To your point, Madam President, because the Home Rule Act covers most of it.
Right.
So so one of the recommendations I will probably make the ask you to make back to the commission is that either we'll have the language out and you'll recommend what would come out, or you will say to them, would you take it, consider taking it out? My hope would be that by the 22nd, we would have the ability to get that done. I'll talk to Tom Livingston tomorrow to see if we can set up meetings next week.
Great.
All right.
Okay, thanks. All right, anyone have any additional questions or comments on that for now? Okay, Article 9 is no changes, and that brings us to the end of all of the recommendations coming from the Charter Revision Commission to the Common Council. And so I think, you know, what I'd like to do now is is you know, there have been some discussion on some of the items and and there have been some proposed amendments. I do want to put forth one recommendation that was made by Councilmember Johan Lopez, who has stuck on a train and hasn't been able to make it yet to the meeting. So he had recommended that we address changing the name of the Common Council to the City Council, as is the case in most other cities throughout the entire country. Common Council, you know, being really, you know, rather old fashioned antiquated and, you know, connected to those, you know, early days of, you know, English settlement. So I personally thought it was a good idea, kinds of, you know, brings us into, you know, the current times. So I just wanted to throw that out on behalf of Councilmember Lopez. See if anyone has any thoughts that that like to share, but it's something that I I like, so. Anyone have any strong feelings either way? Please feel free to share. Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I I liked through you, I like to ask Attorney Megnick if there are, through his experience, are there any cities or towns that are using the term common council? Are we coming from the rear of the pack on this one?
Hartford still calls themselves the Court of Common Council, but they also call themselves the City Council. But most of the councils in the state, I'm trying to think now, are city councils for the most part, West Hartford, all of their town manager, former government. And so more of the in the in the town manager reform era, you created city councils, not common councils. So it's a very common thing. I don't know why Hartford never changed. They they still have the Court of Common Council, but no one calls anybody on the City Council in Hartford, Your Honor. So so it is a, you know, it is a trend and it's an appropriate trend to kind of streamline. The common council is an old term.
Is it, would that be a very expensive thing to do to change everything that we've got from common to city?
Well, the charter would simply be a search and destroy mission, but I imagine there'd be stationary. I I imagine if you have things that are drilled into the building with the use of the term common council, you're not going to change those plaques and stuff like that, but there might be some signage. I don't know. I I don't know what the with the implications would be, but your stationary would change. You'd have to change your website, which I don't think would be an expensive thing to do. You might, you'll have a lot of ordinances that probably have common council in it, but I think what we can say in the charter is that where common council is used in ordinances, it shall mean the city council. So you don't have to go through the cost of redoing all of your ordinances. So there's ways we could address it so that you wouldn't have to go to massive expense in changing the the ordinances.
Yeah, it seems that it's could be something done over a period of time, as stationary needs to be replaced as, you know, things happen. We can just incorporate it. Ms. Najelski-Eichner. Oh, sorry, Jim, you weren't done.
No, I was just gonna say, I really liked the suggestion, because I will tell you that what I say in every conversation with someone I meet is, Oh, I'm a member of the Common Council. Oh, which is the City Council for the city of Norwalk. It means nothing to ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of our constituents, so I thought it was a great idea.
Yeah, I also think it's confusing for people, you know, because City Council, you know, people know what that means. It's a legislative body, but common council is, you know, it, it's, it, it just doesn't connect with people, so.
I agree, my only point was that You know, I, I think that when you get all through this whole thing, we hopefully, the, 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 the whole thing gets approved. And the last thing I want to get involved in is somebody saying, oh, some, some guy taking the view that Some person taking the view that This is kind of, we haven't thought about the cost of, well, the change that is gonna take up in. What else do those people, they're just looking for something else to do and it's costing the city money. We've heard it for, I don't know, for just about everything we do. And if it's minimal and we do it over a period of time, it, it's gonna be, the, the cost is gonna be more.
And I think that that was, that's certainly the way we could do it. It'll take, you know, it'll take some getting used to for those of us who've been involved for a period of time, you know, but.
No, I agree with Nora. I mean, every time I've ever spoken to somebody, they say, what do you want? And I said, this is common council, you know, the city council.
Okay, so, oh, and here's Mr. Lopez. We're glad you can make it, Johan. We were just discussing your recommendation to, to change to City Council. So there's, seems to be some, some support for it, good, good amount of support for it and just, you know, some Just assuring that it's not something that's gonna cost the city financially, just, you know, make the change over time. And yeah, but we have some general support here.
That's great, that's great, okay. Glad to hear it.
So I think, you know, we've got, we have, you know, still about forty minutes here, we've made just a little less, maybe thirty-five minutes. So I think probably the best thing for us to do is address some of the amendments that have been proposed That, you know, maybe just got touched upon a little bit at the last meeting, but You know, so there, you know, we received an email, Ms. Najelski Egner, you have, you know, you have made some Some, some significant and some, you know, not as significant recommendations. So I'm gonna say let's, and I am trying to get them on my screen here. But I think let's focus on, for now, let's focus on Article Article ten, yeah, on Article ten, because I think that's where the more significant ones have occurred. So I'm gonna ask you, Nora, to, to lead us through your amendments. And again, these are, you know, these are suggestions, these are, you know, for discussion. There's, you know, we may agree, we may not agree, you know, no decisions are being made, but, you know, we're here to, you know, talk about some of these ideas.
Absolutely, and, and are you able to show them? As I told you earlier today, my city laptop has entirely died, so I can try, I can try to see if I can figure out how to pull it up on my phone. If you don't, actually, I probably can, if that's, if you don't have it up, let me see.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Okay, that's fine, let me see, I think I should be able to pull it up, hang on two seconds, let me just.
No, I have it here on my, my iPad beside me, so.
Okay, yeah, I think I can, I think I can screen share this, hang on two seconds.
Yeah, can I just say something while she's doing that?
Please, please.
So what I wanted to say, because I'm a little concerned, because between now and the public hearing and then the final meeting, If you need another session, and we haven't done this, I know you're extremely busy these days. Some of my commissions meet on Saturdays, we can set aside a Saturday morning and take three or four hours. And so the Saturday that would probably work is probably not this Saturday, but maybe the nineteenth Would work, so that would give you multiple hours to look at this, because one of the things we're gonna need to do for your deliberation Is to come up with a document that has the various proposals the council members are gonna make. So by having a more robust session, early enough on a Saturday so everybody can get out at a reasonable hour. I just wanted, I just, as I was sitting here, I was starting to get worried about it, I just wanted to throw that out as an idea.
Yeah, okay, you know, we appreciate it, is there, is there, you know, a general feeling that maybe that's something we can do? Heather says no. Okay, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a bit of a challenge, but we'll work that out, we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out, so. Okay, alright, Nora, go.
Yeah, I'm, so I'm just, I'm really sorry, let me see, I just, I think the technology here, this is the We can talk about the ways in which so much of my proposal is about taking the legislative function seriously, which may be entirely Epitomized by the technology that we are given. I, let me just describe, and while I'm doing that, I will see if I can figure out how to
I can share, I can share.
Can you see, can you share your screen of it? Is that possible?
Perfect, yeah, we can see it, okay.
Thank you, Steve.
But I did this a little differently, I went section by section, I, I actually created this yesterday to help me go up to section ten.
Great, thank you, as I, I really Appreciate Stephen, I, you know, the very first and most important thing to say to everyone, you know, is that this language is by no means set in stone. I am not a professional drafter, I am not Steve, I just really wanted to get something we could talk about. And I think a number of, a number of these things will, the language will have to shift a little bit, but at least it gives us a little bit more concrete of a place to start. So if we want to start with Article ten, The first section here that I'm proposing revising is ten five. And this is the question of the, the, so this is the section in which the council does its setting of the cap. And the proposal here, again, to remind people was to divide the cap into two caps. So we would vote on it at the same time, the timeline remained the same, but on that date, we would vote twice. And the And the effect of that would be, sorry, and the effect of that would then be that we would have a cap for the Board of Ed and a cap for the rest of city. And what that then would allow us to do is A, it would just allow the public to really understand, you know, what sort of, what we're, what we're increasing for the city, what we're increasing for the Board of Ed, Because that is really how we talk about it and how people typically want to understand it. But it then also allows us to, if the council wants to make adjustments in the amount That it is increasing or decreasing, we can do that with, for the Board of Ed separately from the city. So we could make an increase on one side or not the other, or a separate increase for each, or a decrease for one or the other. So it is a marginal increase in the council's power, but I think very much in line nonetheless was still, you know, it still does not give us line item authority. And then the second thing that it allows us to do, and this is what would become the new section ten six, Is require that both the city and the Board of Ed Provide the BET and the council with a cap compliant budget. So rather than the situation we have now where the Board of Ed puts out their line item budget in January, The CFO for the city puts forward a, the mayor's budget. In theory, if the council changes anything, which happens more often, obviously in relation to the BOE Proposal than the cities, but could in theory happen to both, there's not actually a requirement currently that There be then a budget presented to the BET that complies with that cap, the city, that, excuse me, that the council has put on. So doing that then means that as of the middle of March, and the date March twenty-first was proposed by Jared Schmidt, our current CFO, As a realistic date by which the city and the BOE could accomplish this, then all the budget conversations going forward Will be on the basis of a line item budget that complies with the council's cap. And so we really can have an opportunity for everyone to see what the consequences are of the cap. And then the last item, so that would be sections A and B, A is for the board, C is, B is for the city. And then, oh, I'm sorry, vice versa, A is for the city, B is for the board, and then C is again a current requirement. But it was broken out here so that it's clear that the CFO of the city is the one who remains responsible for putting forward a proposed mill rate That would cover both the Board of Ed and the rest of the city. Because again, in the final allocation of authority, the city CFO and the BET are still responsible for the mill rate. So that is an existing power, it just was previously, didn't need to be separated out because we didn't have these two separate caps. So does that make sense to everyone? Question, Steve, does that make sense from a, again, not language necessarily final, but a rough drafting perspective? Does that accomplish what I think it accomplishes?
Before you comment, Steve, I just want to make sure that it's clear, you know, Nora did, first of all, reach out to Attorney Mednick, you know, to be You know, certain that this is something that we absolutely can do, that is legal. And also, our CFO, Jared Schmidt, has, you know, provided a good amount of feedback. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, that's clear to everyone, because I do, I know that we do have more members here than we did at the last Workshop where we did talk about this a bit, so go ahead.
So, sorry, and one other thing, Madam President, also, I, this information has been shared, so I reached out to the Chair of the Board of Ed. I reached out to the Chair of the Board of Ed's Finance Committee. It's also been shared with the Superintendent and the CFO for the Board of Ed. So we've, you know, we just absolutely, we're, we want to make sure that this is a fully vetted proposal. But that all information has all been circulated. I don't think, to be clear, that the Board of Ed has yet seen this proposed language, since as everyone knows, sorry, I got it to you very late. But we can certainly send this along, if this is something that the council wants to at least continue the conversations around.
Attorney Mednick, did you wanna, and Your comments, and then we'll open it up for anyone who has questions or, you know, wants to.
I think you said, what I would have said is that this is legally permissible, it's a policy choice for you.
Yeah, okay, alright, so now let's, you know, anyone have comments, questions? I know, general support, general.
Generally, uh, sorry, Greg, you go first.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I guess I'm trying to understand the rationale behind two separate caps. Because at some point in the process, they need both, obviously, we're talking operating budget. At some point, the, the two operating budgets need to come together for one overall city operating budget. So I'm trying to understand The rationale behind segmenting them out to create two separate caps. Because at some point, they need to come together.
Sure, so, um, so the, the, the primary reason to do it, I think, And I agree, absolutely, they absolutely have to come together at the end, and that certainly happens In the last sections of the final BET review, it all obviously becomes one budget again. I think the advantages are really threefold, so one is just for ease of public review and consumption, because this is how we talk about it, right? We talk about it the whole way through the discussion before we vote, and then the vote is on a single total line item, so it's then less transparent to the voters. The second reason is that unless we do the separate caps, There is no way for the Board of Ed to know how much of the total is actually their appropriation. And therefore, they cannot do a budget that is compliant with the cap without that information. Because if we only have one cap, we might have had a discussion saying that we were intending to allocate X amount of it, You know, to the Board of Ed, which is an X percentage increase, but there's actually no way of them knowing that and complying with that, Because that could in fact change, you know, so that, that to my mind is the most important reason to do separate, two separate caps. Because without two separate caps, you can't have a cap compliant budget from only part of the city's departments. And then I think the, the third reason that I think it's Helpful to do that is that it then also does, as I said, marginally increase the council's authority In the sense that if we want to make an increase to the overall cap, and we would like that increase to go to the Board of Ed, Or we would like that increase to go to the rest of the city, we can specify that. So it is a small increase in our overall authority without, you know, going too far. So that's, those are my three reasons for thinking that it was, would be helpful to the process.
Yes, if I can, Madam Chair, if I can just comment to that, the, the current, the current, the current process, When we set the cap, it includes a schedule by line, each department, including the Board of Ed, In terms of what their current allocation is and what their new allocation will be As a result of the cap that we set, so that information is readily available. When you said that, there's no way for the Board of Ed to know what their allocation is, that's not correct. It, it's, there is a schedule associated with that cap amount that shows each department their current allocation And what their new allocation would be going forward based upon that operating cap. So I'm not clear as to the comment that there's no way the Board of Ed would know what their increase is.
And you certainly, you know, Mr. Burnett, as the Chair of Finance would know better than I, but I thought, maybe I'm wrong. I thought all we voted on when we took our vote was a single, like I thought, I, my recollection is that What we voted on is a single statement that says the total appropriation shall be X amount of money. And again, we've all looked at a schedule, that schedule has been circulated, but to the best of my recollection, we don't vote on that schedule.
We, we vote, you, you're correct, we vote on a bottom line number. But the associated schedule, which is always in the backup, shows by line item, every department, including the Board of Ed, How much the allocation would be if that cap was approved.
But I don't think that
Yeah, that information is in the backup.
I, I agree and understand that, but I don't think that schedule has the force of law. I don't think we could require the Board of Ed to comply with that schedule without us having voted on it.
Attorney Mednick, you have a comment on that particular item? Or, you know, We may need our Corporation Council to, to come in and answer that very specific question. I mean, the one thing that I, that I do like about it is that it, it clarifies for the public. You know, because the public, you know, is not always reading that backup, right? They're not, there's, they're not seeing it, they, you know, it gets out there in the news, you know, this, that, you know, it was four percent increase this year for the Board of Education. Definitely gets out there, but you know, I think that it helps clarify things for the public. And the more transparency and the more information that we can, we can give to the public, I think the better. You know, that's just, that's just a thought.
To answer your question, Madam President, you cannot bind the Board of Education. But what I think the proposal does by requiring the Board of Ed to provide A proposed budget that would work under the proposed cap Is you force them to come to grips with what they're saying that they're looking for, because very often in these battles, When I was a member of the Board of Alders, they would come in and say, we want to do this, and we want to do that. And if you give us this much money in the bottom line, we will do those things. And then two months later, we'd see a budget, none of those things would be in the budget. By asking the Board of Education to provide you with a, with a proposed budget, again, not binding, but a proposed budget, It at least forces them to put pen to paper, and it requires them to say to the public, this is what we're going to do, Unless something else extraordinary happens between now and the time we adopt our budget, so. But you cannot bind them, either under the current system or under Nora's proposed alternative. But you can force them or compel them to provide the public with information that they may or may not be in that Current backup.
Okay, thanks. Alright, we've got a few hands here, Mr. Frey.
So I thought about this initially, and I said, yeah, that's not a bad idea. And then I thought more about it, and, and Greg makes a very good point, you know, we have this already. Every, every time we look at that cap, there are two, two numbers that we look at. As a matter of fact, the Board of Education is nothing more than another department of the city. If you wanted to make this a cap for every department of the city, you could do that, too. And that, that'd be perfectly, perfectly Uh, and that, that'd be perfectly uh, perfectly uh, uh, flexible and in, and everybody will be able to see exactly what each department has. The other thing is that um, you know, the Board of Education, um, if we talk about the, the limit on, on or the, the limit on how much we can, or how much we can limit them. You know, the, the state law is that they cannot get any less than what they got the last, what they had in the last budget. But that has nothing to do with breaking this out and, and, and doing our cap. We want to make sure that every department puts a budget together that's concise, that's to the point, that covers all the points. The Board of Ed, uh, the, the BET is then going to go through each one of those line items by, in each one of those departments. And then at the very end, we're going to combine the two numbers and that's what the cap is. I, I don't see where this buys us anything. I don't think it gives us any more um transparency. I don't think, if anything, it's just, it's going to be more confusing. Cause we can't make different allocation to the Board of Ed or to our, our, our operating departments. Cause it's all part of the same budget. Okay, it's all one budget. We break it out into two pieces. We break it out into, into, into all these pieces. If you look at your operating budget book, it doesn't have just uh Board of Ed and uh operating, city operating. It's got every single uh, but uh, every single department in the budget. So I, you know, I, I, I think it's great thinking it's through, but I don't, I don't see what this buys us at all.
Okay, uh, Ms. Shanahan.
Um, I think I have to agree with Mr. Freyer. I just feel like, first of all, the transparency is already there. It's very clear what the city is asking for and we always are very clear about the percentages. It's very clear what the BOE is asking for. We're very clear about the percentage increases there. I think all we're basically doing, and let's just call it what it is, is a transfer of power from the BET to the council. And I don't know that if it's really particularly appropriate. And just as uh Mr. Mednick said, the B, the BOE isn't bound by anything that they say about how they spend the money that we ultimately cap for them. So I, I don't see how we're um, we're improving things in this matter. I think the transparency is already there. I think the public knows. God knows when we do these hearings, people show up. So um, yeah, I don't, I don't see that this is a, something that I would be supporting.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Seed.
I'll probably, I'll let Nora go first, just maybe rebut that, cause I had something separate from those two points.
Okay, go on Nora.
Sure. So I'm gonna, I think um, I think it does a couple of things that are different than we do now. So, and I'm going to get back to this. The, the real difference here is that what we get right now, what happens right now is that the Board of Ed puts out a budget in January, right? And it's just whatever percentage that they would like to be seeking. I think last year was 9.7%. We then set a cap and that cap has a presumption in it, as Mr. Burnett says, embedded in the schedules that were circulated, although not in the vote we took. And that cap was at 4%. We see no document until last month where, in which the Board of Ed explains how they are going to live within that 4% cap. So the primary thing that this change does is in 10-6, it requires, and again, it requires both parts of the city budget, right? It requires the part that is overseen by the Board of Ed and the part that is overseen by the BET to put forward a cap compliant budget in mid-March. So everyone in the city can see in mid-March what the consequence of the city, of the council's caps are. You don't, I, I feel, and again, we'll have to talk to Mr. Mendick and Court Counsel about this. I don't think that we can require that of the Board of Ed unless we have given them a number that is specific to them. Because otherwise, if they had, if the only number the council's voted on, therefore the only number that is legally binding is the top line number, I don't see anything that says to the Board of Ed, you must comply with X amount of money, right? Because we have not voted on how much X amount of money they have. We don't actually do that at all. The BET does that and the BET does not do that until much later in the budget cycle. So unless we take two separate cap votes, I don't think we can say to the Board of Ed, you must comply with X amount of money in mid-March. So I think that is the, I mean, that's the primary driver of doing this structure is that it allows us to have a mid-March budget. And again, at this moment in time, the BOE is the place where we feel like we have not gotten as much information. It could be different in a future administration where the mayor puts forward a budget, the council puts on a cap that is much lower than that, and there is no current requirement that the council and the BET get a cap compliant budget from the city either. So this is not really, this, in this particular situation, we are more familiar with it being a Board of Ed issue, but it really applies across the board. There needs to be a requirement in this budget that the, that the BET, who is the decision maker line by line, is looking at a line by line budget that is in compliance with the cap the city puts forward. And, but I do feel that in order to do that, we must have an allocation to each of the bodies that have line by line authority that is specific to the line by line authority they have. So I'm, and again, if Mr. Mednick, if the Corporation Council has different ways of doing it, I'm open to it. But I think I don't want to lose that the key difference here is actually significant in terms of the information we would get from this that we don't currently have, which is how the two sets of entities are going. And again, I understand they're all one entity. This is all one city. The BOE is a department of the city. All of that is true. But under state law, the only people who have line by line authority are the Board of Ed for that. So one way or the other, we have to know what their line by line is. And the only way we can get a line by line from them is to ask them for it. So that's what this really adds. That is very different and new information that we do not currently get. So I'm sorry, Mr. Seed, I was longer than I meant to be.
No, I just had a comment, um, and I'm not necessarily, um, I'm kind of in the middle of it, but I would think that just to kind of build um on our relationship with the Board of Education, I would like to, like, hear what they have to say on this. Because they are, they are, they are a city department, but they are governed by an elected body that the people elect. And they have their state statutes that protect them um and give them certain powers. So I, I think just to, to help, um, where it's not just the Common Council or if somebody making this decision, I would like to hear kind of what they feel about this because I think it's important that they're part of this um conversation. Because they're the ones that's going to have to do this work um along with the city. So not to give them too much power, um, because they are just another city department, but they are a little bit different because they are governed by an elected body um from, by the people.
Yes, and definitely, Mr. Seed, just to reassure you that we did, I did speak to both the Board Presidents, the Finance Chair and the Superintendent have all been informed that this proposal is on the table. So we've absolutely asked for feedback on it.
Mr. Burnett.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess if we, if we look at the budget process this year, when we set the cap, on the night we set the cap, it was publicized that the Board of Ed will be receiving a 4% increase over their current budget. After we set the cap, that was sent to the BET. And the BET is now conducting department by department discussions, including with the Board of Ed. So when that discussion took place, the BET asked the Bu, the, the Board of Ed, so you were allocated 4%. They didn't ask them, well, they're not required to say, how are you going to make your budget work with the 4%? The Board of Ed came back and said, 4% is not going to work for us. We still need more. We still need more. And if we don't get more, we're going to have to make X number of cuts. So I'm trying to understand how this process that's being proposed changes anything. Once we set a, a, a cap using the Board of Ed, who's just another department in the city, once we set a cap, you got 4%. At what point, or do we, does anyone have authority to say, you have to show us a budget where you're going to make it work with 4%?
Well, that's my understanding from the attorney, from Attorney Bednick, is that we actually do have the authority to require that.
Can I ask?
That we have the authority to make the Board of Ed make their budget work with the amount that we give it. And, and so, a, and, and at the end of the day, they have to do that. But if they're still saying, you, city, you're giving us 4%, but we actually need 9%. Our, where's the middle ground? Okay, well, the Board of Ed's position is, well, if we're only getting 4%, we have to make some changes. We have to make some cuts. We have to cut teachers. We have to cut programs because we're only getting 4%. I don't, I'm not connecting how this change in process changes the behavior of the Board of Ed.
So my understanding, and Attorney Bednick can correct me, is that yes, we can say in, that in March, they have to show us how they would make those cuts. So all the announcements that came out in late May and, and early June about, well, we're going to cut X, Y, and Z, they would have to inform the city of that in March. So that the public can have an informed conversation in March before the budget is finalized as to what the consequences of this cap are. So rather than people being surprised in May and June, we will have to have a realistic budget in mid-March. And again, this applies on both sides, you know, because again, we're talking about scenario that happened this year. It could easily happen on the flip side in a different mayor, a different condition in future years to need to see the same from the city side. How would the city side be cut to comply with the council's cap?
Um, I want to give Ms. Dunn um an opportunity to speak, Heather. I saw that you had your hand up. So I think, you know, what, you know, there's, there's clearly a lot of um, of comments here and a lot of concerns. And so we have something that is, you know, like, the way I think about this i- is that if we are, if we are moving towards more transparency and more um, more understanding for the public and to avoid the kind of um, you know, scenario that we saw this year, I think that that's a positive thing. But if we're looking at it in terms of, you know, uh, power and authority, then that's a different thing. And so, you know, I, I, you know, I think that we want to be really careful around that. So um, you know, I just want to make that comment right now and uh, and I want to turn it over to Heather. You had something to.
I think, I think part of where the confusion for me is, is that the, to me, it just seems like there's some random number, like we got, oh, the mayor's recommending 4% for them and the mayor's rep, rep, you know, saying this is how much Board of Ed's going to be. But where, where are those percentages coming from? Is he just deciding, whatever, the ma, is the mayor just deciding that they're getting 4%? And I think Nora's point is that it might be helpful to make them come up with a budget first with what their wish list of percentage increase would be. And then it would be easier to go back and go, no, that's, you know, that's not what we're thinking, you know. For me, I, I always start with the zero-based budget. So if you knew you had zero from where you were last year, what would you do? And then, you know, come to us and then say, okay, we could do XYZ extra things with an extra 2% or whatever. I, I think there is some value in getting from them their wish list before they ask for a 9% increase, for example. Does that make sense?
I think that, I think that that's the purpose of the joint meeting, um, is to, you know, how, give them the opportunity to share that with, you know, the, the Finance Committee of the Board of Ed, shares that with the Finance Committee of the Common Council and, and then um, you know, the, and the, and the city. So the city has an understanding. And there's already, you know, and Greg, you can, you can uh speak to this, is there are already substantial meetings that take place between, you know, the, the mayor and Superintendent and the CFOs and the, and the, the Finance Chair. So, you know, the, so many meetings happen um before it even gets to that. So um, so I, I, you know, I think that that's an important uh point is that, is that, that, that joint finance meeting is a, a step in that direction. Uh, we have a couple more comments. I do want to, I'm just going to give, um, I just want to take one more comment because we need to wrap up so that the Public Works Meeting begins at seven o'clock. So um, I think, you know, Mr. Freyer, you were next. And clearly this is, you know, I just want to say clearly it's a, you know, very uh, you know, um controversial. Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll have to continue discussions on this. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Freyer.
So I just, I'll do it real quick. I think that everything that's been said is, is that Greg has said is, 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 is spot on. Uh, what happens though is that we do have meetings with the Board of Ed. You know, the, you got to remember that the first Board of Ed uh budget that came out was something in the neighborhood of about 12%. And uh, meetings go on with the, the CFOs uh and get that number down. So that 4% that they came up with was pretty much of a negotiated number that they recognized that this is what they, they can afford. In addition to that, you know, we start this process so darn early that you don't know what some of these numbers are going to be, okay? The reason that we've got to uh an agreement with the, with the Board of Ed is that they did a reconciliation and they find what, what has happened time and time and time again is that the Board of Education, they asked for X number of dollars and doesn't spend that much money. Where they spent a lot of money in June to make up with, for that budget that they get. The, the, the state, uh, the legislature in the state says you cannot get any less than what you asked, what, what was approved for you last year. That doesn't mean that uh, unfortunately, it does mean that you can't give them a, a lower budget if they didn't spend the money that they did last year. And, and so.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I want to give the other two people a, a chance and we only have about.
I gotta jump off anyway, so.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm going to be with you in a couple minutes. So I'll see you in a few minutes. Okay, uh, Mr. Seed.
Yeah, I just wanted to just make a point, because I've been, been involved for quite some time. And I think just to give the Board of Ed some grace is that this, this game happens all the time. Previous administrations, and not to call it a game to minimize it, but we have this where, okay, we're going to have to make cuts. And then either the state comes in, gives extra money, or the city finds some money late in um, in the game, and this happens every year. So to the Board, the Board of Ed's defense, they, they play this game and we give them 4%. And then coming in June, here's a extra, um, some extra funds to help fill the gap. So to have them make these cuts and we have it, we don't know how much we're going to get from the state. And again, this is not anybody, not to just anybody that's in office, because this happened in previous administrations, previous delegations. And I think this is, this is like part of the issue is because you get this money that comes in late in the game and the Board of Ed knows that something's coming. Um, so we're asking them to cut, make these cuts and tell people that they're going to lose their job um in March, uh, potentially. But then we don't know the money that's going to come in in influx. And this game has been happening for as long as that I've been, been involved and, and, and it's, it's, it just, I think we just need to really look at the full picture and not just um, not just say like the Board of Ed's not doing this, the Board of Ed's not doing that, because it's this, this has been going on for a long time.
Yeah, and you know, and it's worth pointing out um in, in that regard is that, you know, the city never knows what it, you know, what surplus it might have, right? It might be, there may be no surplus and there may be no opportunity to give extra uh, once the reconciliation happens, you know. This year, it's, you know, more substantial. Um, but we never know what that's going to be. But the other thing um that, that is addressed uh by, you know, some of that post-budget uh funding is that, you know, it, it um holds the MBR, which is really important because, you know, we, we can, as we know, we can never give the Board more than, or less than, than we have in the past. Ms. Shanahan?
Well, I just want to uh reiterate the point that I think that a lot of this budgetary process is transparent already. There is long conversations, as Jim said, it starts in October or November. Before we know it, we're in March. And so these are very negotiated numbers. There's no surprises about what percentages are coming. I think it's very clear to the public. And it's still, you know, saying that we're going to nail down the BOE to say like, what is it going to look like for a March budget of 4%? We know what that's going to be. And then it, we know it's going to change. So I, I don't really see that this is really getting us further because we know that the BOE can always spend the money any way it wants as soon as we give them the number. So I, I don't see that this is getting to the finish line for us on this issue.
Mrs. Jelski Eichner?
And I'm just really going to push back on that. I, we watched hundreds of parents say, we didn't know, we did not understand. We, we did not see what this was going to look like. And I think that that is what is, you know, would be valuable here. And obviously, and the same with cities, March numbers are not finalized, the Board of Ed's March numbers are not finalized. But I do think that this would provide a significant increase in the information available to parents and the, you know, again, the council and to be, and the BET, right? This would really let people understand in a much more concrete way what the consequences are going to be. And again, this is not intended as a criticism of the Board. And I think to Mr. Seed's point, I also think that an earlier view of the budget might help reduce some of the gamesmanship because it will be much more obvious to everyone much earlier sort of what the needs are, what the consequences of these cuts are going to be, et cetera. So the goal is not to um penalize the Board in any way, nor could we. Because at the end of the day, they retain the flexibility, but I do think it would help with some of the public, the broad public understanding and our ability to navigate. As we do get closer to the end of the budget times and the surplus is available, we'll have a much better. as we do get closer to the end of the budget times and the surplus is available, we'll have a much better sense of what the need is. So that's the recommendation sort of cause there. So I, I just want to be very clear, this is not a negative on the Board of Ed, and, and like I said, it really is a gap for all situations, you know, just because we have, the city has historically been much closer to what the Council appropriates, doesn't mean it could not be different in the future and might not be as applicable on the city side. So.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the meeting now, because if some of us don't get over to Public Works, there's not going to be a quorum. So, and we will continue the discussion. We do have another public hearing on the 8th at 7:00 PM. And that has been, that, that notice goes out tomorrow, and then, you know, a further discussion meeting, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll work on a date for that. So motion to adjourn, please. Ms. Shanahan, all in favor? Okay, good night. Thank you, everyone.